And good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regular scheduled Cumberland County Board of Commissioners meeting. This is Monday, February the 22nd, 22, 2222, 2022, but in a minute, it'll be 222222. And I'll call on Commissioner Michael Booth for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
If you would join me in a moment. Heavenly Father, thank you for visiting us again here today. Remind us each day that we make decisions for everybody, all the people, every day. Give us the wisdom to make those decisions be the correct decisions and in the best interest of all. Thank you for today and all the other days. And as my mom told me every day when I woke up, two miracles just happened. My eyes opened. So, thank you again. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And this comes to one of the favorite part of our agendas for this evening, and that's the introduction of the Fayetteville Cumberland County Youth Council members. I'm gonna ask them to step to the podium. I've got Asia Merkison, and then I had Ernie Otero, and they didn't give me the third one.
Lauren McDonald.
Okay, they scratched their name out, Lauren. I'm gonna make it, put it right back in there. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Lauren McDonald. I'm a sophomore at Pine Forest High School. I'm a member of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council.
And my name is Asia Merkison. I am a senior at Cross Creek Early College High School, and I'm a member of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council as well.
Good evening, all. Lovely to see you guys, of course. I am an alumni of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council, so some of you guys are very familiar faces, and it's lovely, guys, to see you guys, of course, to make it through the pandemic. My name is Ernie Otero. I went to Pine Forest High School. That's where I graduated from. And then, of course, I am a student at the University of Fayetteville State. So, Fayetteville State University, go Broncos.
All right.
And Lauren, what school are you from?
Pine Forest.
Oh, Pine Forest and Pine Forest. Oh, I just-
You missed that, huh? All right. We got you down there with the Pine Forest. Welcome. We'd ask you to watch our meetings. I don't think our computers are working tonight. Where's my IT people? Danny's right there. So, oh, the others are working?
No.
Oh, the others are working, but ours is not. We're not the top-
Mine is. I got here at 5:00.
Oh, okay. All right. All right. Thank you, Danny. We'll have you all come back after the meeting and tell us how this crew, I'm not gonna call them a motley crew, how this crew did tonight, and what impression we made on you. Ernie, welcome back. You are, I guess, mentoring now as you're at Fayetteville State University, and so, welcome to each and every one of you all. If y'all, and I want y'all move down, no, when you sit down, move down a little bit so we can see you. We can't see you behind all that podium right there. There you go.
I wonder if any members from Terry Sanford.
Is that where you went to school?
Yeah.
Well, anyway, we will call on recognition by our vice chairwoman, Commissioner Stewart.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, I would like to call Ms. Pamela Story up front.
Commissioner Stewart, I told you she sat all the way in the back so she could walk up and everybody could see her as she walked up. They stand right there. This is another E.E. Smith graduate. She was a-
Can y'all see me?
Yeah, we can see you.
Okay.
Just barely, but we got a little stand down there.
There is a stand there.
My neighbor for many years, she's about two doors down, three doors down from me, where we grew up, and-
Her mother was my teacher.
Her mother was your teacher?
Mm-hmm.
No wonder you're doing good.
I'm very excellent.
All righty.
I am honored to be able to recognize Ms. Story for her awesome, phenomenal, major accomplishment, for her service in this community, in this community, and with the Cumberland County School System. So, this proclamation reads, I think I gotta take off my glasses to read. Whereas Pamela Story graduate from E.E. Smith High School, is an alumna of North Carolina Central University, and earned her master's in social work from the University of North Carolina. And whereas Pamela Story started working with the Cumberland County Schools 23 years ago, and for the past 11 years, she has been the social worker coordinator in homeless liaison for Cumberland County Schools. And whereas Pamela Story recognized that students in transition and experiencing homelessness are one of the groups heavily impacted by COVID-19. And she has been at their side helping with transportation, food insecurity, social, emotional needs, and more to enable them to survive, thrive, and be successful. And whereas Pamela Story has been working incredibly hard over the last two years to maintain the bridge between families, schools, and their community, and she was recognized at the state level by being named the North Carolina Liaison of the Year. And whereas Pamela Story knows it takes a village to serve children, and works with her team to collaborate with community partners to provide all the resources they can because she knows strengthening these partnerships will ensure providing resources is not enshued in Cumberland County schools. And whereas Pamela Story serves as a mentor to new homeless liaisons, a support person for the district and the state office, and is a dedicated member of the North Carolina Homeless Education Leadership Team. And whereas Pamela Story was recognized for her focus on empowering students in transition, and was announced as the 2022 National, National Homeless Liaison of the Year, and at the National Association for the Education of Homeless Children and Youth Conference in Atlanta, Georgia on November the 14th, 2021. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that we, the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners hereby acknowledge with gratitude Pamela Story's commitment to the Cumberland County community and extend congratulations to her on being named the 2022 National Homeless Liaison of the Year, presented this 21st day of February 2022, and signed by our chairman, Commissioner Glenn Adams. Thank you so much for all you do. It does not go unnoticed. Thank you. Wow. On behalf of all of the children in Cumberland County experiencing homelessness, I accept this proclamation and strive to continue to do more so that they can grow up successful and overcome life's challenges. And thank you so much. This is, this is huge. Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, you know that.
You know. We don't nothing else. We taking a picture like you.
You might need to step now, though.
Where is the step? Congratulations a little bit. Thank you.
Oh, take the picture.
Oh, you are. That's a son of a-
Have you met Glenn?
Not, no. Come on up there.
I think you need to move to your left a little bit, please.
Keep him.
Right. Congratulations.
Hold it up.
And just before Ms. Story leaves, it's, this morning, we had the Commissioner Evans and Commissioner Stewart and I had the privilege of representing the board at the Martin Luther King Breakfast. And it brings to, as we celebrate Ms. Story, brings to mind what Dr. King said is that it's about service, and service to the community. And she serves on the Board of Trustees for the hospital. She's been in the school system for a number of years, and that means a lot to us because we've got Michael Booth who served on the school board while she was there. We've got Commissioner Lancaster who served on the school board, and we've got Commissioner Counsel who's worked in the school system. I'll stop right there. Worked in the school system. And they've all had an opportunity to pour into Ms. Story and have seen her work. And we just wanted to take this moment to make sure, and Commissioner Stewart, thank you for, we know the school board, recognized you, but this entire county because of what you brought to this county being not only the state, but representing us nationally. We want you to know that we're proud of you, and we want you to continue to do the work she serves on our homeless committee. And so, there are great things happening in Cumberland County. And don't for a minute believe that, and I'll tell this to our young folk there, from here, you can go anywhere. And that's to be a true story as we look at Ms. Story and being the national liaison. Thank you so very much. That also talks about, when we talk about service, we talk about, and if you look on our consent agenda, we'll do it in the consent agenda, but I want to at least give Phil Harris just a couple of minutes to be able to talk. We're gonna have a proclamation recognized in March 2022 as American Red Cross Month. And if you, again, know anything about service, the Red Cross is about service and taking care of our citizens throughout this nation. Mr. Harris.
Just wanna give you a little update. It is March as Red Cross Month. Every president since FDR has proclaimed that. And I just wanna give you an update. The Red Cross, despite COVID, is doing its mission since we were formed downtown in 1917. So, with our two offices on Fort Bragg, we're serving members of the armed forces with reconnection workshops and green ramps as they're deploying. With our office off Bragg Boulevard, we're serving disaster clients, and these clients are not impacted by hurricane. But we had 213 families that were impacted by a single-family home fire. So, we were able to put them in a hotel and get them food and clothes. So, we're still teaching CPR. We're teaching kids in school now virtually. And then, blood drives. Cumberland County has stepped up with COVID impacting the blood supply, and we continue to work with our community for people to step up. But it's not about that. It's about our volunteers. We're 90% volunteer-led, and we're excited to be here for another 100 and some years. But thank you for recognizing us now. And just a reminder, it's 100 days to hurricane season, so we're gonna knock on wood. We skipped this hurricane season. But thank you for the support that the commissioners give us, and thank you for the community gives us over these years. So, thank you so much.
All right. Thank you so very much. Thank you for what you do and what the Red Cross does throughout. And anybody that, between the blood donor center and the Red Cross, if you can give blood, be a blood donor. Because there's a shortage of blood throughout, through the pandemic. So, that's just a plug for the Red Cross and for the Blood Donor Center.
All right. We're all in this together. It's not the Red Cross or the hospitals, the patients that need the blood. So, thank you for that shout.
That's exactly right. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And as he just stated, there's also the next proclamation. Thank you, Phil. We are 100 days from hurricane season, and you will see that we would proclaim 2022 Severe Weather Preparation Week, so that everybody please, you see it on TV, Channel 11, Channel 5, about being prepared for the weather. Our emergency management, Jean Booth, and those do an excellent job. We will have, through our PIO and Ms. Sally Shutt, send out promos as to what you need to do to get ready for severe weather, because we've had more than our share in the last few years. So, we don't want anybody to lose their life or during any kind of severe weather. So, we will proclaim that as severe, where is that? Let me see. Severe Weather Preparation Week. Oh, yes, Mr. Booth. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, what is, what is that link or website that people can get on their phones if they, so they can get notified about any, you know, news updating and stuff?
Cumberland Alerts. You can go ahead.
Cumberland Alerts. That's all they need to type in, and it'll go to it.
Cumberland County NC-
Can you, can you come to the mic, Sally? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Booth.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Booth, Commissioner Booth, for saying that. Yeah, if our residents will go to CumberlandCountyNC.gov, that's our website. We have a link to Cumberland Alerts, and they can sign up for free weather alerts, and we push out information through that. So, we encourage everyone to do that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That takes us to our public comment period. I call on the county manager, Ms. Cannon, to read the public comment policy.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. The Board of Commissioners sets aside time at each evening meeting to hear the thoughts and concerns of our citizens. Each speaker will be given a maximum of two minutes this evening. I believe we have seven speakers, and our total time set aside is 15 minutes. No time may be yielded to a speaker by another speaker. We ask that each speaker, as they come forward to the lectern, will address the board and provide their name and their address. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cannon. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
Chairman and commissioners, we have seven speakers this evening. Our first speaker is Kathy Greggs.
Ms. Kathy Greggs. Ms. Kathy Greggs. All right, our next speaker.
Our second speaker is Mr. Kenneth Slankard.
Mr. Slankard.
Yes, sir.
I talked to Mr. Slankard on the telephone. I told him to come talk to you all. Good evening, board. My name's Kenneth Slankard. I live at 5443 Kentucky Lane. That's in Arlington Plantation, community off Parkton Road in southern Cumberland County. I'm here before the board today because I've exhausted all methods in trying to get anything resolved in that area in regards to code enforcement, people living in RVs in a residential neighborhood, RVs and trailers, people running woodcutting businesses out of their residence in a residential neighborhood. They live in county. They think they live out in the country. It's still a residential neighborhood. Nothing's being done about this. And I was just, just attacked by the guy that lives in the RV right before I came to this meeting. Okay? I was verbally assaulted by him. Okay? These people don't live here. They don't pay property tax here. They've been here for four months. Nothing's happening. Okay? The next issue I want to talk about is illegal dumping. The areas out there are atrocious. I mean, the farmers can't plow because the fields get flooded, because the ditches are so full of garbage. The satellite stations don't take enough. I just took particle board there the other day. They wouldn't take it. No one's gonna drive all the way to Fayetteville and pay $20 to dump particle board, or a mattress, or a toilet. They dump it all over Brisson Road and Parkton Road and, and Woodington Road. And it's everywhere. I'm not talking about stuff that I can just pick up by myself. This is a systemic problem that is polluting our wells. It's causing problems across that area. And yeah, you can come and pick it up, and two weeks later, it's the same thing. I mean, it's just, I served this country a total of 30 years, and I am, I am disappointed and ashamed of what I've seen in this county and this state. I'm from Michigan. You don't see bottles and cans on the side of the road. You just don't, because you got paid for them. 10 cents each.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker.
Our third speaker this evening is Mr. Sean McMillan.
Mr. Sean McMillan.
Good evening. Sean McMillan, 624 Golden Range Drive. On January 8th, 44 days ago, Jason Walker was killed on Bingham Road. We know that Jason was an unarmed pedestrian. We know that Jason Walker was killed by an armed motorist named Jeffrey Hash. We've known this for 40 days, 44 days, and yet Jeffrey Hash remains free. For more than six weeks, Jason's family has dealt with the reality that an armed motorist, Jeffrey Hash, shot and killed their loved one, and was allowed to walk away scot-free. The Fayetteville Police Department and Chief Hawkins are at fault for allowing Hash to remain free, but Cumberland County officials are culpable for another reason. Jeffrey Hash is a county employee. Most people in our community understand that Hash was not arrested because although he was off-duty when he killed Jason, he is employed by the Sheriff's Department. We are here to call for the immediate dismissal and firing of Jeffrey Hash. He clearly used excessive force when he took Jason Walker's life needlessly. He should not be allowed to remain free on paid leave. Our actionable request to the Board of Commissioners is to pass a nonbounding resolution that offers condolences to Jason Walker's family on behalf of the county, and calls for Sheriff Ennis' right to terminate Jeffrey Hash's employment with the CCSO immediately. It is within your power to vote on and pass said resolution. We also ask that this board call for investigation into Jeffrey Hash's past. What can we learn from this, and how can we prevent erratic county employees from taking more lives without asking serious questions about who Jeffrey, Jeffrey Hash is, and what enabled him to kill an unarmed man? We also repeat previously made calls to this board to work to impose independent oversight over the CCSO. It has been obvious for years that we cannot and shouldn't have ever expected police to police themselves. And since you brought up the breakfast this morning, the words of Dr. Martin Luther King, justice too long delayed is justice denied.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All of us or none of us.
Our fourth speaker is Mr. John West.
Mr. John West.
Right here. Come right on in. Thank you all for having me. And it's the first time. I hate to be here. Yeah, my name's John West. I was born here, family born here, most of them, and my grandkids.
Can you give your address?
Uh, what's that?
Your address?
In Fayetteville, North Carolina. I, I've been through military, and especially the corporation I work for. I've been almost every state in this United States. Been overseas, been from north to south, to east, west, so on, so. And I have, I've seen litter, but this is the worst place. And there's a neighboring county that's just about as equivalent. It's a shame. And the job I do, I go down almost every road. Couches, mattresses, coat telling off what he's saying. It's unbelievable. I've been in kayaks. My son's in the Navy back there. We've been in kayaks and gotten trash. It is so embarrassing when people come 95, across the border. They see the first one and the second one. I hear them. I stop at these deliveries. I deliver about every place you think. Here, I deliver at Fort Bragg. Imagine people coming from not only out of state, but dignitaries coming, flying into Fort Bragg, and this looks like a landfill. You can't tell landfill from the rest of the county. It is embarrassing. I know y'all haven't done it. I know it's not all on your shoulders, but there's got to be something done. To make sure I haven't missed anything. I have actually even seen, and I'm not throwing on our law enforcement, please. I have actually seen people throw trash out right beside the, what's that?
Wait, I'll let you finish that sentence.
I'm sorry. But anyway, I'm sorry.
You can't stop my voice.
I'm long-winded. Thank y'all for your time. But WRL's been involved, and the NC DOT in Raleigh has.
Thank you.
Our fifth speaker this evening is Ms. Sharon Davis.
Ms. Sharon Davis.
How are you?
Doing fine.
I actually-
Can you pull that down so we can, yeah, there you go.
I wasn't prepared to speak, but I just felt the need after I got here.
You state your name in that address, please.
Sharon Jackson Davis, 1900 Sloan Avenue.
Yes, ma'am.
But I'm here for a voice for our animals. I work with animal rescue, help so much with them. We have got to have your help. We can't do all this alone. There are so many animals abused that we see come through the rescue, broken legs that their owners just got tired of them. One of the main things, I think, is the population. We need to have some type of laws to spay and neuter. There is so many animals out there unwanted, and so many that maybe just padding some pockets for people. And they're, the animal is the only thing, a dog, cat, that'll love you more than he loves himself. And I mine every one of them. I know they love me. But I'm just asking if we could get some stricter laws, something to help these animals, and us be their voice. Us make things better for them. Make them feel loved. Put, you know, just animals being tethered outside for months and months in the rain, the cold, and, you know, they're just like us. They get cold, they get hot, they get thirsty, they get hungry, just like us. And I was just here, I would like, wanted to be their voice for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Look, I even had seven seconds left. I keep doing it.
Our sixth speaker this evening is Ms. Heather Brock.
Ms. Heather Brock.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Heather Brock. I live at 581 Braxton Boulevard. I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening about some growing concerns in our community. I, too, am here for the furry loved ones that Ms. Sharon just spoke about. It's my understanding that in this county, that animals are viewed as property, but they cannot be treated the same as a piece of furniture or a vehicle. Animals are living and breathing companions that we are all responsible for, and we simply must do better as a community in caring for them and protecting their welfare. They did not ask to be domesticated, nor did they choose to be purposely bred for a profit. They definitely don't want to be tied to a tree and left outside to the harsh elements such as sleet, rain, snow, and 90-degree-plus heat, with no shelter, with no food, with no water, with no attention. Animal neglect is, and abuse in this time is at an all-time high. There are countless cases that I've personally heard about from friends and neighbors and read about on rescue pages where Cumberland County Animal Control does nothing when they go out to investigate a complaint. And many times, Animal Control does not even show up when they're called. Many, many times. These animals are suffering needlessly, not only at the hand of the abusers and the neglectors, but also at the hand of the ones who have the ability and the authority to put a stop to this and don't. Ones who give excuses such as my hands are tied. Who is tying their hands is my question tonight. We need to recognize and take responsibility for this abuse and neglect, and for the overpopulation of the animals in our community. Extreme effort is needed. Enforcement is needed. Education is needed. Abusers must face consequences and penalties. Proper shelter, food, and water need to be enforced. The tethering ordinance here in Cumberland County that's already in place needs to be enforced. The breeding ordinance that we have in, in place needs to be enforced. And most importantly, spaying and neutering of pets needs to become a requirement and then enforced by law strictly. The limit, to limit the number of dogs in this town per household is ridiculous. This does not indicate responsibility or irresponsibility. So much more to say. Next time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Our last speaker this evening is Mr. Chaleko Hurst.
Mr. Hurst.
Good evening, citizens. Good evening, citizens. My name is Chaleko Hurst. Reside at 1385 Wayside Drive. The purpose of me coming before you today is the same right that citizens have within the confines of Cumberland County. You are the first chain of legal redress that we have as citizens. We have county commissioners. We have city hall official, city hall officials. We have the judicial branch. So, as citizens, we come before you. Before I came up here, citizen Sean McMillan brought to your concern a case that's troubling to all minorities, period, because it's an ongoing issue. And I seen the facial expressions in the bowed heads when he brought up the case concerning Jeffrey Hash murdering that citizen. I pay attention to people's facial structure. We have a young man, Jason Walker, who was murdered live on video. Tune out all the- Tune out all the noise, and I just want you to watch the video when you go home today. Look at the body, look at his feet. Tune out whatever hash, story hash has given the public and his supervisor. The body has no shoes on his feet. That means he was struck. That's the first thing you need to think about. Go back and watch that video. The second thing you need to take away from that video is that he called his supervisor first, and it was a silent whistle to those in law enforcement. When he called the nine-one-one, he said, hey, I shot an individual, but I'm an officer of the law. He said that as a silent whistle, so when law enforcement show up to that crime scene, they didn't show up armed and ready to shoot him and arrest him on sight.
Thank you.
Watch the video.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
There are no further speakers.
All right, we will close the public comment period, and we will go to our approval of the agenda. I'll call on the county manager. Is there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully ask that the board approve adding an attorney, a closed session for attorney-client under North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A three. In addition, uh...
Madam Manager, also, that is the perceived direction of the board respecting lawsuit of Arlene Harris versus Cumberland County Department of Public Health, twenty-one CBS three oh nine seven.
Okay. In addition, Mr. Chairman, I'm asking the board to add two budget revisions to item two H. The Finance Director, Mrs. Evans, placed these budget ordinance amendments in front of you this evening. Both of these are related to state-directed funds, new initiatives, and we're, Mrs. Evans is working with the Administrative Office of the Courts, and they're wanting to send the money to the county before the end of this month. We're adding budget ordinance amendment B-two-two-zero-eight-eight-seven, and this is for an innovative court pilot program for veterans. In addition, and that amount is for two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. The second budget ordinance amendment is B-two-two-zero-eight-eight-eight in the amount of three-hundred thousand dollars for a human trafficking court pilot program. Thank you.
And you want to add those to...
Items two H.
Two H. All right, if I can get a motion to approve the agenda with those additions?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
All right. That takes us to the consent agenda. Uh, you've had an opportunity to look at the agenda. Anyone have any concerns about the consent agenda? If not, I'll take a motion on the consent agenda.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
All right. Ooh, what does that take? Uh, there are no public hearings?
That's correct.
Uh, that takes us to the item of business, which is, um, the contract with Freeze and Nick, well, let's go back, uh, we did those two items that you added up under the consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Uh, and I'm just thinking, I saw Commissioner Booth circling those, because I think it is important that, um, these were two items, two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars for the allocations for the North Carolina Legislative State Directive grants and accept award for the innovative court pilot program for veterans. Um, there are a number of veterans in our community, and we, uh, I think Judge King, our chief district court judge, and Judge Olivera, um, were, uh, very instrumental in, uh, in that award, and we are grateful for that. And the second award is another three-hundred thousand dollars for the, uh, human trafficking court pilot program. Um, and I think that's probably with, uh, in line with the Worth Court that's already in place, and that's our chief district court judge, uh, Tony King, three-hundred thousand dollars. Uh, that will enhance, uh, our court system. And, uh, for people who don't know, you know, we lead the nation in cases for human trafficking, and some people will say that's good and some people say it's bad. Uh, it's good in that we've taken, uh, it under our wing to be able to go out and find those cases, where other people have swept it under the rug and act like it doesn't exist. So, uh, to the court system and Judge King, we say thank you for being able to shed light on that and to do that. Uh, so, thank you all so very much. I don't know if anybody had any comments. If not, that would take us to, oh, I thought you were waving at me there. The contract with Freeze and Nichols, uh, Madam Manager, for the North Cross Water and Sewer, oh, uh, Madam Manager.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to introduce Mr. Jermaine Walker, our Director of Engineering and Infrastructure. This is an item that was discussed at an agenda session, and tonight, we're bringing forward the contract. Mr. Walker.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
The, uh, the contract that we're bringing before you, uh, is a follow-up from the, the November session in which we requested that Freeze and Nichols be, uh, accepted as the preferred choice for engineering services for the Norcrest Sanitary Sewer System capital improvements, uh, based upon them receiving the highest score from our RFQ. Uh, and staff is, uh, requesting now that we accept the, uh, the contract to cover the, uh, the following areas, uh, new electrical equipment and generators for the buildings for all four lift stations, uh, pump repairs for, uh, two lift stations in Wade, uh, the Falcon force main additional testing and inspection, and then also, uh, system-wide info and infiltration, uh, assessment. Uh, and we're asking that the contract be approved, uh, in the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars.
Anybody have any questions? We introduce this up for our viewers that may not know you, Mr. Jermaine. We all know you, but, uh, if you can introduce, uh, your title.
Uh, good evening.
He's looking at the TV. Look at him. He turned right to the TV to look at you.
Uh, my name is Jermaine Walker. I'm the Director of Engineering and Infrastructure here at Cumberland County. Proud to serve.
Thank you. Uh, anybody have any questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Uh, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to, uh, nominations, and I will call on, uh, Vice Chairwoman Stewart, Senior Citizens Advisory Commission.
Thank you. The Senior Citizen Advisory Commission recommends Tracy Honeycutt and Renata Simmons. For the Cumberland County Local Emergency Planning Committee recommends George White for the Hospital Representative category. The Cumberland County Workforce Development Board recommends Jennifer Watson and Sherri Turner for the Representative of Business category. The Kefir Valley Health System Board of Trustees Nominating Committee represent, recommends Shannon Matthews for the R-In position category, and Pamela Suggs Story, Jason Poole, and Sanjay Shai, M.D., for the two general public categories.
That takes us to the appointments, and I will call on, uh, Vice Chairwoman Stewart for the appointments.
The Equalization and Review Board, the, um, asks for a motion to appoint the following nominees for the Appraiser category, Charles Grantis. Industrial category, William Holland. The at-large category, Rodney Sherrell, and Tracy Henderson.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Mid-Carolina Aging Advisory Council?
Uh, motion to, um, ask for a motion to appoint the following nominees in the Consumer category, Jeanette Huffman and Verice McKay.
If I can get a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
That is unanimous. There was a third.
Oh, it's the third?
Uh, I think there were three vacancies.
For the Mid-Carolina Agency?
Yes, ma'am.
I have Jeanette Jordan Huffman and Verice Love McKay. That's all I have.
Okay.
Okay. For the Veterans Hospital Represent, Representative category, Audrey Kizzy. A motion to, uh, appoint Ms. Kizzy.
And that's the joint Fort Bragg and Cumberland County Food Policy Council. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, you still want me?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. This is the third person that you were talking about. This is again, I'm sorry, thank you. Keep me in line. This is still the Mid-Carolina Aging Advisory Council. If I can get, I got a second for Commissioner Booth. All those in favor?
That is unanimous. Thank you.
All right. Keep me in line now, keep me in line.
For the joint Fort Bragg and Cumberland County Food Policy Council, I would ask for a motion for the following nominees, um, the co-chair, Military Chair from Fort Bragg category, Lieutenant Colonel Joseph, a member who does not work in the local government category, Lauren Tyler, and a member involved in local farming and agriculture category, Erin Palaski. Close enough. And a represent, uh, a member representing Cumberland County School District, Sabrina Steiglman.
If I can get a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
All right. We will recess the Board of Commissioners meeting, and we will convene the North Cross, uh, North Crest Water and Sewer District Governing Board meeting, and, um, I would ask for a motion to approve the, uh, consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
And that takes us to the North Cross Water and Sewer Items of Business, which is the contract with Freeze and Nichols. I guess we do it twice. Madam Manager.
Yes, sir. This is just the item that you approved as the Board of Commissioners. Now you're sitting as the Norcrest Board.
Okay. If I can get a, a motion to approve?
A move that we approved as...
The contract? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
All righty. I will adjourn the North Crest Water and Sewer District Governing Board meeting, and I will reconvene the Board of Commissioners meeting. Uh, and that is all the items that we have. And, um, and so that is our agenda before we go into closed session, uh, but because, uh, we will go into closed session, I will call on our Fayetteville, Cumberland County Youth Council members to come back and, um, uh, give us their remarks. Pull your microphone down. There you go.
Hello again. I would like to start by saying thank you for having us at the meeting tonight. It was a very great learning experience. I'm really excited to see what you guys have in store for our community, and we just want to say that in the month of March, in January, I'm sorry, for Christmas, we are excited to report to you about our Christmas activities that FCYC participated in during the holiday season. During one of December's county commissioners' meetings, two FCYC representatives reported that we were collecting adoptive teen money for our fundraiser. Adoptive teens are fundraisers that we do every year, where we collect donations to provide Christmas for teens that are in need. In December, we were able to provide Christmas for four, for four teens, and we were able to give them everything that they asked for. We are very excited to keep continuing this FCYC tradition and giving back to our community.
We also continued our award-winning project, the FCYC Jingle Tree, where our community donated different items to our jingle tree for us to donate to teenage foster children in Cumberland County. We were able to provide Christmas for seventeen teenagers, and we were so thankful for our councils and communities' generosity. Fast forward to now, February is a very meaningful month for the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. February is Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month, and we also take this opportunity to bring awareness to teen dating violence and spread information on it.
At all of our February FCYC meetings, we have been focusing on teen dating violence, and it has been so informative. Today, we launched our Kindness Matter Week, where we spread kindness throughout the week. We always look, we always look forward to this all year.
We are working hard and making change happen in our community. Thank you for your continuous support of FCYC, and we thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak.
And if you want to talk about what you saw at our board meeting tonight or how we conducted business, I'll give you the opportunity.
Okay, well, I would like to first...
She going that way. I'm gonna go.
Hit the buzzer.
I would like to say that I'm very excited, and I really enjoyed my experience tonight. It was very informational, and it was a really great learning experience because I aspire to be a lawyer one day, and I'd like to see how this whole process is working out. It was such, I really enjoyed myself tonight. Thank you guys for having us.
Um, it was a great learning experience as well, and it was great to see how everyone conducted themselves accordingly, and...
It was, um, it was good to see everybody's face again, a refresher, of course, and, um, it was very smooth. Loved how everything went out, the unanimous calls, loved to see it. I voted myself. And then, um, just a little bit for the people that don't know what the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council is, um, of course, we are live. On the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council is a youth-led organization that focuses on the embodiment, embodiment of our community through, uh, service. So we do different, uh, projects, of course, like the Adoptive Teen, the Kindness Matters Week, and different things like that, just to give back, um, to different teens in our, in our city, county, and then we also advocate for what they believe is important and try to make change based off that. And, um, do you guys have any questions for us?
Well, I'm just, uh, it's Kindness Matters Week, so I'm gonna see if you can come and talk to these other Commissioners. I'm always kind, but these other...
So tomorrow is Sticky Note Day, so that means...
Which one?
Sticky Note Day. So you're gonna take five sticky notes. I would like everybody to do this. It doesn't really matter, and just write something kind, and then hand it off to somebody, and, you know, try to implement, of course, being kind. Of course, this is the month of love, so we just try to do this every single February.
Okay, five sticky notes to everybody, that even y'all out there now, and the people on TV, and, uh, give it to somebody, uh, talking about kindness. I'd like that.
And of course, if you do that, take a picture or anything like that, so you can spread awareness, and of course, tag us on Instagram, Facebook, and we do have a Twitter, uh, NCFCYC.
All right.
You know what? If you don't mind.
Come right here.
As the Chair, at the time when I was a member, it was Fayetteville Cumberland County Youth Council, and, and I want you, I want you to know that I'm very proud, I'm awfully proud of you, because it lays a solid foundation for your political career and aspirations. So I appreciate what you're doing. Hang in there and get ready to change the world.
And I don't know if anybody saw, um, did y'all see the picture of Commissioner Evans? Years ago, when they had the election, they wrote on the board, and that's how the, the numbers came in, and as a member of, uh, Fayetteville Cumberland County Youth Council, he was up there, um, he had a little bit more hair back then, and, uh, he was, uh, it was a great picture and a great reminder of where you started and where you can come from. So thank you. Y'all will come around and shake hands, you know, we always have to get a picture.
And then can we also get a picture with you guys today?
That's what we're gonna do.
You don't have to ask him twice.
Thank you.
Seventy-three grand. Five-four. All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I like to take a picture. We can't block him.
No. I'll take a picture. Thank you.
You can't even make my picture. You can't. We get all the five fours. Y'all got to be more.
No, this is...
There you go.
Yeah. It's... She ready.
All right. One, two, three. Cumberland County. Do it again. One, two, three.
Yeah. Trojan frog. Trojan frog.
Thank you.
Glenn, I need you to...
Yes, ma'am.
If it's gonna burn, you'd be on fire right now.
I know. I know. She's coming around. I said, "Farewell, fam." She's...
Yep. And that will take us to our, um, closed session items. I can get a motion to go into closed session, one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven eight three.
And so the attorney about the twenty-one CBS three oh nine seven case.
So moved. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
All righty, we will go into closed session. Uh, come out of closed session?
So moved.
Second.